Evening, I want to call the Columbia County Board of Commissioners October 5th meeting to order. Please bow your heads for our invocation. Precious Father, come before thee and thank you for all the many, many blessings you bestow on Columbia County and the whole CSRA. I pray that you'd be with us tonight, and, Father, I pray that you give wisdom and discernment on the decisions made with honor. You also like to just lift up the family of George Hall tonight. Friend, he helped Columbia County out in a lot of ways and fortunately passed away this past week, and so we pray that you be with Margaret and his children. Pray that you bless the rest of this meeting. In Christ's name, amen. Please stand for the pledge.
Pledge, religious. United States of America, we proudly offer the right to live, to live freely, to have freedom of speech.
First, we have left the record show, we have a full form of commissioners. We have the minutes from the September 21st meeting in your packet. They meet with your approval, accept a motion to do so.
Motion to approve.
Second. Questions? All in favor, raise your right hand. Motion carries. Approval of the agenda, Mr. Johnson, we're moving one item from consent to debate.
That's correct, Mr. Chairman. With your permission, we'll move item I-1A5, which is an alcoholic beverage, Lazo Fresco Cafe, that'll become item H-2B.
Okay.
By the way around, I'm sorry. H-2B will become I-1A5.
I got it.
Thank you.
Okay. Recognition, is Shelley Blackburn here? Shelley, our executive director of the Convention and Visitors Bureau, has a few words to say.
Good evening, it's a pleasure to be with you again. I'm here for our annual update to really recap what we did in 1920, remarkable year for Columbia County and our organization as a whole. I have with me tonight our associate director, Ms. Ashley Swain, I'd like to recognize her. Our board members are not in attendance tonight, but I do always love to give them recognition. Volunteer their services. We're very appreciative of them and the efforts that they put forward with tourism in Columbia. So we'll just jump straight to it. We have consistently remained 27th out of 159 counties in the state of Georgia for tourism expenditure. In 2019, we know that tourism in Columbia County generated $166 million in direct tourist spending. And as you all know, we are funded by lodging tax, so we live and die by this hotel motel data. Lodging tax collections compared to 1920 were up by 22%. When you compare that to our last pre-COVID year, we are still down by 6%, but making great strides back to normal levels. Looking at occupancy, we again saw a 22% increase over last year, as well as revenue per available room. The really exciting news that you all are aware of, but starting July 1st, the Georgia law will now mandate the collection of short-term rentals in occupancy tax. That's phenomenal news for our budget and also for the community services budget, which receives 50% of the lodging tax. As you know, we are a destination marketing organization. We do that in a variety of ways, but these are the top five ways that we help spread the word about Columbia County through our website. We saw nearly 170,000 page views last year. Our time on site was up, and organic traffic increased by nearly 200%. Social media, both Facebook and Instagram, saw huge gains last year. Our paid digital campaigns saw nearly four and a half million impressions last year, which is phenomenal. Our e-newsletter and our visitor's guide both saw increases as well over the last year. I mean, we have really put all of our eggs in the outdoor tourism basket, because that's really what people have been willing to do over the last two years. And Serene 18 has been the jewel in our crown over that time period as well. We did introduce a new route to Serene 18 this year, it is the Below Dam Route. So we've had huge success with this. We also produced a short film to really explain the new route. It's seven minutes long, I cannot show it to you entirely tonight, I know you have a lot of business to get to. I'll show you just a snippet of it, and then I'll tell you a little bit about the success of Serene.
... Is there anything finer? I submit that there's not. We also have some new trails in the works. So, just take in the note, dial up our website for scroll. So for those who aren't familiar, explain how to...
Well, jump back and kiss myself. Benny! Just about that time. Get those paddles saddled. What's the good word, Sally?
Sir, summer solstice has passed and things are getting pretty hectic. I'm sure it'll all work out soon.
Shh, can you hear that?
Um, summer breeze?
Always makes me feel fine. Carry on.
Glamping is in full force and it's a hit. Paddlers are starting to feel restless, and there's been an increase in safety violations.
Say, what now? What now?
Yes, summers have been rampant, life jackets forgotten, hydration ignored.
Be kind and rewind. You say the paddlers are...
Restless. Due to the popularity of the Serene 18 in the recent year, passports have been completed in record time. And you've mentioned unveiling a new trail?
That I have. Tell me more.
Well, sir, I've done a preliminary analysis of the region's topography, and at the southeastern side of Clarksville Lake, I hypothesize that there could be a dam trail.
Oh, language, Sally?
No, sir, a water dam.
A dam you say?
A dam I do say, sir.
All right on. Now get on, get.
Yes, sir.
In the name of Serene 18, it's time to blaze a new trail. Benny, let's cruise.
It goes on for seven minutes, but spoiler alert, they do find the new trail. They take to find that. We have distributed 9,000 passports, we have a huge following on social media, 4.5 million impressions for Serene alone in the last year. And that video that you just saw, the full seven minutes have been viewed over 250,000 times since it came out, and we've had nearly 400 people who have completed the entire passport program and claimed their free t-shirt. Seen a lot of success. On a regional level, our video was awarded an Addy Award, a gold, which is the highest that you can receive. On a state level, we received the Trailblazer Award from the Georgia Association of Convention and Visitors Bureaus. And just two months ago, we received really the pinnacle of tourism awards, and we received one from the U.S. Travel Association. We're very proud of Serene and all that we've been able to accomplish with it. Moving on, our Board of Directors and our Product Development Committee has been really focused this year on identifying projects that were recommended by the Georgia Department of Economic Development. One of those included public art, so we have actually issued a request for qualifications for artists who are interested in developing a sculpture that will be near Savannah Rapids Park, the Head Gates area, a place for people to attach their love locks and also enjoy public art in a natural setting. And thank you all very much for your support of glamping. We have really had a great relationship with the Georgia Glamping Company, which is now Timberline Glamping Company. They have expanded to six sites at Wildwood, and they are sold out every weekend until February. So we are very excited about that relationship. Signage and wayfinding, many, many years of talking about this, and it is finally coming to fruition. So in the next few weeks, you'll actually see those signs being installed. Our organization was involved with hiring the company that designed them, but it is now in the very capable hands of Mr. Kyle Titus, and he is taking care of the implementation process. Hospitality, we have joined efforts with the Chamber of Commerce for a Hospitality Council, and we are also bringing back the Columbia County Restaurant Week. That will be the last week of January, so stay tuned for more information on that. Estimated economic impact, so in 2021, the CBB booked, sponsored, or serviced a total of 38 events, and we estimate the economic impact of those to be at just shy of $2 million for the last fiscal year. And last but not least, we relocated to the Visitor Center last year. It has been a phenomenal move for our organization to be involved and be able to talk to visitors on a daily basis. We're happy to report that we have assisted over 4,000 visitors in the last fiscal year at the Visitor Center. That concludes my very brief report, but thank you so much for your time tonight and for your continued support of tourism in Columbia County. I'd be happy to take any questions that you may have.
Questions? Thank you very much, y'all are doing... It was a good year, thank you so much for what you do, and we look forward to even more funny videos, I guess.
They are coming. Don't worry, thank you.
Thanks, Shelley.
Thank you.
I know that a couple of people have asked to speak, and I'm going to move those, or let y'all speak when we get to that issue. So, Christians, you have the consent agenda in front of you. Each item on the agenda has been through the necessary committees and received the votes to be placed on the consent agenda, so if they still meet with your approval, accept a motion to approve them all.
Make a motion to approve.
Second. Any questions? All in favor, raise your right hand. Motion carries. Onto the new business in the debate agenda, the first item is I-1A1. We'll have a motion for that.
Mr. Chairman, you do. I make a motion to approve the request for a major revision to existing PRD for Tax map 051, parcel 049, to allow a berm within the buffer on Baker Place Road, subject to the conditions enumerated in the September 16, 2021 Planning Commission Report, and the condition that one irrigation meter may be sold to the parent parcel ahead of the first approval final plat for irrigation of buffers and/or berms, landscape islands within the right-of-way, or other landscape areas.
Second.
For this one, we have a condition that required a 50-foot undisturbed buffer between Baker Place Road and the new development till the replace. Request came in from the developer to amend their PUD to basically take the undisturbed buffer out and in place put a landscape berm. So the berm will be six foot tall, landscape will go on that, it'll be very similar to what you'll see north of this location. The staff thinks it's a good fit for the area. There are some conditions that protect it, if they don't do the berm, it must remain undisturbed, there's some timing issues and all that you covered your conditions, but some examples of what is just north of this neighborhood, and you can see how they, excuse me, did the same thing with the heavy landscaping, so staff recommend approval on this.
Why is it going to be 50-foot undisturbed?
Six feet tall berm, but heavily landscaped, the area is still, go back to trees. If you look there, the berm area, the area still remains the same in size, just allowing them to get in there, cut the trees down, stockpile the tops, we'll replant it with a nice landscape. Correct.
Okay.
Any other questions? All in favor, raise your right hand. Motion carries. Next item is I-1A2, and I believe that's where we had some folks that wanted to speak. So Pam, Pam Lightsey, Pam, come on up and state your name and address for the record, and please, please hold your comments to five minutes or so.
Yep, sure will. Briefly, thank you Chairman Duncan, I prepared my notes so I wouldn't forget anything, and Columbia County Commissioners for allowing me this time to speak. On behalf of our community, for the record, my name is Pam Lightsey, and I am a resident of 113 Brittany Way. Most of you know that I'm very pro-business, small business, so I wanted to show you a picture of our front entrance, which is down below, if you can see that. It is an inviting and peaceful area, and in 2006 is when I purchased this property, and have been a resident of the county for 34 years. I was drawn to the quietness, sense of community and location, and like many of those here tonight, it was the same, and so there is a group that are here on our behalf for our community. As you've read in the rezoning narrative, on September 17th, a meeting was held with representatives of the listing brokerage and buyer, the takeaway from this meeting that there would be a zoning meeting for information. I have to admit, I was caught off a little off-guard with the approval was given by the association, the recommendation of planning and zoning would be given that evening, September 1st, which was only four days later, to have zoning changed and bring this matter before this board. After additional discussion following that meeting, we know additional information needed was needed to be compiled. Our HOA held a meeting with property owners to share information that was stated at the meeting on September 21st. We invited our commissioner, Don Skinner, to a meet and greet, so others could voice their concerns, which took place Wednesday, September 29th, and many there voiced their valid concerns. We felt it was very important to talk to the buyer, we want to be good neighbors on this, we want to make sure everything is worked out and in writing, so we invited a potential buyer to a meet and greet last night, and we did that last night between 6:00 and 6:40. A little bit later, we put on the agenda 6:00 to 6:30, but he was gracious and stayed a little bit longer to answer additional questions. It allowed those to make, that could make it, to ask those questions. We think there's still a little bit more work that needs to be done before a decision is made tonight. The main concern that we shared and that was addressed is the, and is the biggest, is the substandard road that leads into our property. It's a private road, it's not maintained by the county. We understand that through deeds and plats, there was illegal access given to the parcel from Colkey Drive, and apparently sometime through Martinez Industrial Boulevard, and however, through the development of our community later, in 1998, it was extended by this private road. So you're asked to take the zone from S1 for the request for a light industrial or heavy commercial use, likely the best according to the file RZ210904, and we are in agreement if we can come to an agreement between the new buyer and put in some provisions regards to the road itself. And what is exactly a utility contractor? Companies such as Beam Contracting, Great South Southeast Utilities, Garing Civil Works, Blair Construction, US Duffy, Trotter Site Preparation, are just a few of those that were asked to zone for this parcel. We've met with the buyer, we want to be good neighbors with the buyer. Obviously, if a larger contractor were to, if he were to sell to a larger contractor, there would be some concerns there as well, so we want to know what the provisions are in place with the land that protects the citizens of Columbia County, in particular our community? What provisions are in place for the potential buyer to limit trucks and trailers? What happens if the growth for the small business, which we would love to have growth of small business, will traffic increase, and what's in place to handle this? The children obviously catch the bus stop at the corner of Brittany Way and Columbia Road, which right now is just a two-way road with no sidewalks. Could be an increase of morning traffic, and afternoon traffic is a concern as well for the residents. We're comprised of a community where eight of 26 units are older women that might not leave their home but to run to the grocery store once or twice a week. I think most of those are here with us tonight. They enjoy their morning and evening walks up and down the current road, they sit out front and talk. It's a unpleasant days under the conditions for potential use of, additional use of heavy vehicles. Who will be responsible for the care of the road, not on those of limited incomes? The quality of life for our owners and enjoyment in quietness area, we have very little crime because we are so diligent in watching out for each other, so I think we could be good neighbors when the business is not there, making sure that we watch it, vice versa. It's nice to have two people in the office for our older population that's in that area, so that's obviously one of our things that we want to make sure we convey. And then, of course, the liability. So currently, the HOA holds an insurance policy for the area known as the common areas. Who will be responsible now that the private road is accessed by a place of business? Who will be held liable if something were to happen on the road? Will our insurance go up because of the road has changed? And who will pay for that increase are all questions that have been brought up. Most of you know that I'm also in Rotary, so in the Rotary, we have a four-way test, right? So is it the truth? Is it fair to all concerned? Will it build goodwill and better friendships? Will it be beneficial to all concerned? These might be some of the questions that should have been asked when looking at the development of our community back in 1998. And of course, back in 1998, they probably didn't think this parcel would be used in this manner, which I think is a great use if we can put some things in place. We are just asking and respectfully asking for the vote to be tabled, so we can have a period of due diligence to put things in writing, requesting for specifications to be spelled out in a deed agreement for the maintenance of this road for light industrial slash heavy commercial traffic, and granting more time will allow parties to come together with our new owner of the property.
Your request is to table it?
Table it, correct.
To the next, to the next meeting?
Next meeting, yeah, and give us some time.
Is enough, or would it...
I would love to have 30 days, but I mean, it's hard to get to...
Well, you have to work with the buyer, too, though, we've got to make sure that...
We need, yeah, there's 26 votes, so I don't know if you want them to stand up, they're presented here, and then I also have a copy of what I read and a copy of a signed agreement from the owners as well.
If we can work it out with the person buying, that's the key.
We would love to do that, yes, sir. If we can have 30 days to table it and come back.
Somebody else wants to speak, too, so, thank you Pam. Jonathan Crawford and Ollie Higdon.
Jonathan Crawford, 884 Willow Lake, Evans, Georgia 30809. I'm here on behalf of the seller, but thank you for your time here this evening. I wanted to just give a little color on this process in general, it didn't just come up overnight. I think our initial correspondence relating to the county was the end of July, so over two months ago. As I mentioned, representing the seller, but the buyer, I've helped him along this, with this process and kind of what it entails, set up a meeting with staff, and I think this was all outlined in the applicant's narrative as it related to the rezoning timelines and the meeting. But the 1st of August, we sat down with Will Butler and staff, and of course, the first question was, you know, specific to the use and kind of the traffic and the type of vehicles that would be at the site. We originally had intended to be on the commission meeting two weeks ago, but I had, I know a big part of this was, you know, of course, I always like to be transparent and reach out to your neighbor, so I try to facilitate that negotiation and reaching with the HOA. It took me a little time to actually get a meeting confirmed, but we set that up about two weeks later at our office. I think that was a good meeting, Pam was present and was able to speak with the president of the HOA as well. We kind of provided them with the concept plan that you see in front of you and discussed the use, and I think one of the first, you know, they had some concerns that we walked them through with regards to stormwater retention, you know, some squatters that were potentially in the area. They mentioned a stop sign where Colkey Drive and Brittany Place intersect, and we took note of all those concerns, and of course, I think Pam mentioned, you know, this is a private road, and of course, that would be a concern, you know, for those residents, and Mr. Higdon was gracious to say, you know, he'd be glad to, in some shape or form, to contribute. I thought that was, you know, going a little bit over and above, because we have to take into account the fact that this easement has predated the development at Brittany Place long before. There's been a private easement that's been in place. And so with that being said, I know the entrance, they have a fence there, and she showed with her photo, you know, this is going to be the focal point, and I don't want to speak for Mr. Higdon, but I know he said, you know, this is going to be the face of his business. So he, of course, wants to make sure that it's presentable with landscaping, and of course, that road's just as important to him because it leads into the entrance of his subdivision. So we, I kind of lay out all this groundwork to say, we've been down this road a little while, I think I've had three calls with the president of the HOA, several calls with Lightsey, several emails explaining the process, and kind of encouraged them to have a representative present at the public hearing portion of this. So it's unfortunate, you know, that this feedback wasn't done sooner, but, you know, at some point, we would like to get through. I know as part of the planning, there are a couple of conditions attached, one as it related to the actual location of the 20-foot easement, and wanted us to get, so there are a couple of issues that can be worked out once we get the entitlement portion of the property behind us that will, you know, that will require getting some additional survey work, and I know nobody wants to spend dollars until at least, you know, they can find out the zoning's in place on, on the, there's two plats out there, one is specific to this parcel and kind of shows the 20-foot easement on the far eastern portion of the property. Plat done by Swift and Associates for the actual Brittany Place, actually shows you as the center line of Brittany Way. So, I mean, you're talking three or four feet, but that was something that traffic did call out. We did have a pre-development meeting with the county, the only item that came up there was, the county does have a stormwater pond that they need to manage at the rear of the site, and asked the buyer if he'd be open to granting access to that pond, and he had no issues there. So we've checked a lot of the boxes, like I said, it's funny, we're coming full circle, but actually, last week, I had reached out to, we left our meeting six weeks ago with the HOA. It had the Planning Commission meeting a month later, so I didn't sneak up on anybody. And following that, of course, two weeks until we get here to VOC, and I actually called the president last week just to reach out and say, you know, this is kind of a courtesy call, we haven't heard anything from anything, but we, you know, from those initial discussions, we did talk about if there were any concerns, once you spoke with your, you know, your HOA, to please, you know, want to be aware of those. We think transparency is obviously the best policy, and I think both parties want to be good neighbors, so they're working for the benefit of each other. So, long story short, you know, we'd obviously like to get through the entitlement portion. I think there are a couple outstanding issues regarding, you know, we're looking at potentially helping and contributing in some of those calls, but at the same time, I mean, I think it's, you have to be aware of, I mean, we're helping, you know, county came, you know, to look and see and get access to the party, we weren't sitting there turning around saying, hey, looking for a tri-party agreement on maintenance or something. We all understood that that wasn't the best part of the development as a whole and trying to work with each other. So this, you know, was a good development in general. I would mention, and I don't want to, I put Ollie on that request, just that there were some current concerns about actual traffic and the type of vehicles. I do know, you know, I, there's a concept plan out there that shows 20 town home units here, that's currently not entitled for that, but that would be something that would be a much heavier, heavier traffic generator than what we're looking at today. Be dot manual for traffic, you know, 20 units at eight traffic trips a day, you know, that's 160 roundabout trips a day, you know, whereas you'd be lucky to get to 40 here. Regards to the type of vehicles, I would let Ollie speak specifically on that, but there's no large vehicles, I think he has a staff of really four that would be there permanently, and I think he has eight employees total, I mean, so not a heavy traffic generator, and I'll let him speak to the vehicle. That's a question that came up both by staff, as well as during our Planning Commission, and we addressed that both times. So I understand the need, you know, their request and their concern, I think there is time to still continue to work through those issues, and like, and put some money forward with getting a updated survey and plat, and then also addressing some contribution, but I think probably the buyer would like to get the entitlement portion behind him before spending money on stuff like that.
Understood. Are you, are you good with us tabling this till the 1st in November, or the...
There is, so the buyer has not purchased the property, the property's under contract, there of course is a contract in place.
Right.
I have spoken with the buyer, we would be open to, if the board would like to see that postponed to the next commission meeting. Ideally.
Fair enough. What's the best way for them to actually handle the road situation, Matt, and your...
I'll defer to Mr. Driver, if he wants to speak, it's a, over legal document.
I mean, I think it should be a document between the two of them, it'd be almost like covenants, where you had maintenance obligations and potentially money that would go into a fund that would pay for the future maintenance.
Would it be in a private road, it's not for us to...
Yeah, I mean, that's, we, the county shouldn't be involved, it should be between them.
An agreement that is then registered at the courthouse, some type of...
That's currently not entitled for that, but that would be something that would be a much heavier traffic generator than what we're looking at today. Be that manual for traffic, you know, 20 units at eight traffic trips a day, you know, that's 160 roundabout trips a day, you know, whereas you'd be lucky to get to 40 here. Regards to the type of vehicles, I would let Ollie speak specifically on that. But there's no large vehicles. I think he has a staff of really four that would be there permanently. And I think he has eight employees total. I mean, so not a heavy traffic generator, and I'll let him speak to the vehicle. That's a question that came up both by staff as well as during our planning commission. We addressed that both times. So I understand the need, you know, their request and their concern. I think there is time to still continue to work through those issues and like, and put some money forward with getting a updated survey and plat, and then also addressing some contribution. But I think probably the buyer would like to get the entitlement portion behind them before spending money on stuff like that.
Understood. Are you, are you good with us tabling this till the first in November or the...
There is, so the buyer has not purchased the property. The property is under contract. There, of course, is a contract in place.
Right.
I have spoken with the buyer. We would be open to, if the board would like to see that postponed to the next commission meeting. Ideally.
Fair enough. What's the best way for them to actually handle the road situation, Matt, and your...
I'll defer to Mr. Driver if he wants to speak. It's a, over legal document.
I mean, I think it should be a document between the two of them. It'd be almost like covenants. We had maintenance obligations and potentially money that would go into a fund that would pay for the future maintenance.
Would it be in a private road? It's not for us to...
Yeah, I mean, that's, we, the county shouldn't be involved. It should be between.
An agreement that is then registered at the courthouse, some type of...
Yeah, I mean, to make it binding and for future owners of the neighborhood to know what they're getting into. I guess it would be recorded in the state records.
Thank you. Y'all, any questions? Any other questions you want to add?
Am I hearing that the two weeks is preferable, first week in November? Which one?
Two weeks would still fit within our due diligence that's currently outlined within the contract. So we don't have a problem.
If it goes beyond that two weeks, that puts the buyer at a disadvantage? Is that a...
Well, we'd have to go back and amend the contract to extend that because you have money going hard on the property that you're not sure you really want to work with at that time. I kind of look at it as a private matter. You know, like I said, there was a condition in there to kind of shore up the plat as it relates to the ingress, egress, even regardless. So there's kind of an outstanding issue that needs to be settled with the HOA regardless, and those can kind of be handled together outside of zoning. We'd like to table it for two weeks.
All worked out in two weeks?
Well, that's kind of would be my big question. I mean, that's a very subjective, you know, the road's been in place since 1998. You're asking them to, they're only generating probably 40 trips per day out of their existing 208 trips per day. So they're responsible for 20% of the overall traffic volume there. But then it's on a road that's, like I said, that's 20-plus years old. So, I mean, glad to work with them. It's really not out, this is between buyer and, and, you know, the HOA. Glad to put my input in there, but, you know, hopefully they can find a happy beating. But I think, I mean, I think, I spoke with the, I think the HOA will tell you, I've been very transparent with them and trying to help for both parties. So I'm representing the seller here. But I think they have a great opportunity with Mr. Higdon's profession being a site contractor. I mean, I think he can get favorable bids to do this. This is the type of work he does. So I think it could be a very synergistic relationship, you know, but I, as long as everybody's reasonable.
When his vehicles are not on a job, because I know he's not making money unless his vehicles are out doing work, don't store the vehicles at, at the intent? What kind of equipment is that?
Ollie, do you mind speaking specifically to that question?
Ollie Higdon, 967 Windmill Lane, Evans, Georgia.
Thank you.
Have, have four, I believe, four foremen's. They drive vehicles for me, and three of them drive their trucks home. And I have one, I have two trucks that are driven from the shop every day.
When you say trucks, are you talking about pickup trucks or are you talking about big trucks?
Pickup trucks. I don't own a big, 450's the biggest I have.
Okay.
So I have two trucks that are, that are housed at the shop every night. And then I have Lisa Lane who works for me, and then I have, she has an assistant that'll be coming in and...
But as far as supplies, pipe, buyer, any of that? When, when, when a job's left over and there's material left, planning on bringing it back in? And is that on a trailer or that, that's, that's where I'm...
No, we buy jobs per job, and whatever's left, we send back. Everything's shipped direct.
Equipment, is that...
It stays on the job and goes from job to job.
So you don't have any big equipment going back there either?
Ever. I haven't to this point.
Questions?
So are you, are you good with the two weeks or four weeks or...
I think, I would like two weeks so we can be within our due diligence period. And as he stated, or Jonathan stated, I do this kind of work. I don't have a problem working something out, that portion of the road. And we went into detail yesterday. If something happens during construction, full responsibility.
Procedurally, if at the end of two weeks, we're getting ready to come back, what, what does, if he's not ready, if they're not ready, they just come back and ask to have it tabled again?
I mean, they can either have a joint agreement to ask to have it tabled and then probably be inclined to, you know, because it's their, their matter. If one wants it heard and one wants it tabled, then you're going to have to decide. But ultimately, it's between the two of them. So hopefully, they can figure out an agreement and then just alert you to that fact and you not make it a part of your motion, but just know that that's something to consider.
But just so you know, I don't have a problem working with them. I feel like we have, out to where. I definitely hold some responsibility for the portion I'll be using.
Sounds good. Thank you.
Thank you.
Questions? Do we have a motion?
I'll make a motion, Mr. Chair. I'll state this first, that I think both parties are willing to work together. It sounds like it's something we can solve for the benefit of everybody, okay? I make a motion to table the request for a rezoning from R3 to S1, a property located at tax map 077C, parcels 064 and 065, October the 19th, 2021.
Second. Any other questions? On the paper, raise your right hand. Motion carries, tabled, the 19th.
Item A3, Mr. Chair. I make a motion to approve the request for a major revision to the existing PUD for tax map 075, parcel 071, 075, located at 2218, 2220, 2222, 2224, and 2228, Larn Street, to allow front-loaded garages on these lots.
Second.
In this case here, this is a PUD. And in the PUD narrative, if you go back one slide, I believe it was, there was, there's a requirement that lots 33 through 38 would have slide-by driveways, as we call them, so the garage would be in the rear of the house. Originally, this was going to have an alleyway behind the houses. POPO did not allow that, so the alley was omitted. In exchange for the alleyway, these slide-by driveways were required. This change will allow it to go to just a standard lot, no requirement to have a slide-by driveway, which would match the remainder of the neighborhood. Permits have been issued already. This is, this is a mistake that was made by all parties involved.
The rest of the neighborhood has front?
How about the other section that was designated? Rear entrance drives, are they, are they rear entrance? That changed also, I believe, on the upper, upper end alley product. Closest to rice, we're moving.
Mr. Stu?
Right. The remainder of this is all front-load. You're right, I did misspeak. That one section there is the rear load, the remainder of it is front-load.
And it was the alley load for the...
Correct.
Houses are already there, built.
They were permitted and under construction. We call it a mistake, correct.
And they are facing that aggregate field corner?
I'm sorry, say that again.
They are facing that agricultural field in the corner?
No, sir, it's these lots here, and they're, all the homes are facing north.
They're facing north.
Any questions? Any more questions? On the paper, raise your right hand. Motion carries.
Item A4, Mr. Chair. I make a motion to approve the request for a variance, a section 90-53, list of lot and structural requirements for the property located at tax map 035B, parcel 027, point eight acres to reduce the rear building setback for a deck, subject to the conditions of mill rate of the September 16th, 2021 planning commission report.
Second.
Here you have a property that, that a butts, core property up at the lake. So they're looking to build their deck. You can see the lines here showing the corner of the deck. This does require the setbacks variance. Their property line is the red line. So this side over here is, is core property. There's nothing to be built there, so they're asking for the deck to be allowed to encroach in the 10-foot setback.
Or have a rule that says you can't get too close?
They do not have a rule that says you can't get too close. Their rule is you cannot cross the property line. So no eaves over the property line. So anything that extends beyond that line would have to be removed. So going one foot from that line, stopping short.
They would be careful. Cora will shoot up with chainsaws.
Absolutely will.
Any other questions? On the paper, raise your right hand. Carries.
Second, in case anybody wants to leave, because the next couple may have some discussion. There's some neighbors that...
Unless you want to continue to sit here and suffer through this meeting, you're welcome to go. Pam, okay.
Go ahead.
Yeah. I just thought I might be ready to go. All right, the next is the item that was moved from consent to debate.
Okay, Mr. Chair, this is item A5, alcohol, alcoholic beverage license for Fresco. I make a motion to postpone the consideration of Fresco Cafe LLC's application for a distilled spirits license till November the 2nd, 2021, Board of Commissioners meeting.
Second.
Here, it was a application to allow the sell for on-premise consumption of distilled spirits for Fresco Cafe. Prior to this application being received, this site, this app, this restaurant did receive citations from Department of Revenue for violation of state law on the sale of alcohol. They do have a hearing scheduled for October 28th in Atlanta. We're asking to postpone this decision on this new license until that hearing has been held and decided upon.
A question?
Can we ask, is the owner here? You come up? You just state your name and address for the record, please.
Ralph Armstead. Restaurant address is 4071 Columbia Road.
Just want to make sure that you understand where we are here and see if there's anything that you had to add or if there's anything you wanted to tell the board before they took this item up.
Well, I really wanted to show up today because we do acknowledge and we understand why the license were revoked. We opened during the pandemic, for opening at the hungry, the homeless. We just tried to focus on doing what's right. There was something done wrong, so we acknowledge that. They came and corrected that. It's posted. Since then, we've gone back down with Ms. Hall and taken steps to correct it, wrong that was done. But we want to stay in business. We want to stay open. Because of now and where we are, it takes alcohol for a small business starting up like our business. That's just, I just wanted to be here.
Okay.
Appreciate you showing up. Any questions?
So your intent is, I know the 28th, that's, that's correct. That's when your hearing with the state is, is that...
And basically, we're waiting on the results of that hearing.
Of that hearing, okay.
That's what happened. So they're asking to postpone their decision until the 20, until after you had your hearing on the 28th.
Okay. All right. Thanks.
Thank you, sir.
Motion, second on the floor. Any other questions? On the paper, raise your right hand. Motion carries. Here. Vice Chairman Richardson, I believe you have... This is the Sumter Landing, the retaining wall. Nobody wanted to speak, so take forward.
Matt, can you kind of bring everybody up to speed before we do a motion and options?
What are the options here?
Yes, sir. So we have here, the original item was an easement encroachment agreement for 1143 Sumter Landing. Recorded plat shows a five-foot easement in favor of Columbia County along the side light line of this address. Retaining wall, an existing retaining wall failed. It was a wooden retaining wall, and a permit was applied for it and struck a concrete, a poured concrete retaining wall. At first, it was a talk of being a three-foot wall, then we received plans showing it going up to a five-foot wall. Because it's a five-foot wall, code requires, wall permits requires the encroachment, easement encroachment agreement. Noted on the application, the encroachment was signed, waiting on your decision. While waiting on your decision, the wall was constructed. So it was constructed with no permit. Permit had not been issued. Constructed without an encroachment agreement. It was constructed by, really get technical with it, have one business that was hired by the homeowner who then subbed it out to another business to do the work. By doing that, the original business made themselves a general contractor. Don't have a license to be a general contractor, so you have somebody doing the work without the proper license. There were no inspections on the footing for this wall. Staff was not called and asked for an inspection because there was no permit issued for us to go out and do an inspection for. I did speak with the homeowner and explain what was going on. They had some concern about the house uphill from this wall falling over. They were concerned with the time crunch. We did expedite this to get in front of you as quick as we could. However, before you had time to take action, this wall was poured. It is in place. We do have a constructed wall in place today, five-foot tall locations. So the options are, one, you could direct staff to go tear this wall down because it was built in an easement without permission. Two, you could, you could direct the homeowner to have the wall removed at their cost and then start the process over. Apply for the permit, get the encroachment agreement, have the, have the wall inspected properly as it's being constructed. Could allow them to have third-party inspections done. So obviously, we can't go inspect the wall now because it's poured. Concrete's poured, we can't see the rebar, we can't see the footer, we can't test the compaction under the footer, so they could hire...
The risk is it can fall.
Sir?
The risk is it can fall.
It could if it wasn't constructed properly, it very well could fail. Yes, sir. But I don't know that because we weren't there to inspect it, so...
Was there a stop work order placed on this?
There was a stop work order placed on this as well.
Was, did, was it ever lifted at some specific point? Technically, the poster's out there.
I'm not sure it's still there. It was posted, and it was a picture of the, of the stop work order posted. I do have that, yes, sir. But we need, we would have to have third-party inspection. So a licensed engineer would have to go out and basically inspect this wall, write a letter, put his stamp behind it saying the wall meets design criteria. We don't know that the wall was built on one property. I think both property owners admitted that the original wall kind of meandered. I don't know that we ever knew that the exact wall location, I mean, that where the exact location of the original wall was. We do know this new wall is in front of that old wall. But again, we don't know whose property it's on. The plan that was submitted by the engineer actually stated that the, the plan was drawn based on our GIS data. Our GIS data has a disclaimer that it's not accurate all the time. They even mentioned on his plan that a construction statement needed to be done to ensure the wall was built in the proper location. I talked to that engineer. He said that he did not do that. That's not saying another engineer didn't do it, another surveyor didn't do it. He did not do it. So we need third-party inspections. We need a survey to show that the, the wall is on the, on the proper property. We have an encroachment agreement from 1143. If that wall meanders across property lines, we need one from the neighbor as well. If the wall meanders across property lines, I think both neighbors need access to maintain that wall to make sure the upside uphill house, they have issues, they have rights to maintain the wall. They're not dependent on the downstream neighbor to maintain it if it's partially on their property. If that makes sense. That's, that's, that's pretty much the items I see, and I'd be happy for staff to jump out and say if they have anything that...
Is it your wall? Come on down.
So 1143 facing the two homes and the wall, 1143 is the one, the lower one?
Correct. Correct.
Before, if they could...
Record, please.
Excuse me? Sorry.
Just state your name and address for the record, please.
My name is Ashley Marks. I live at 1143. My neighbors are 1141, just up the, up next door to me. First of all, nice to meet you. I did speak with Matt on Friday, I believe, two weeks ago, and he informed me that you guys were doing us a favor, basically pushing it to approval on this date, and I am very thankful for that. So first of all, I want everyone to be appreciative. Shortly after that phone call I had with Matt, I discussed with my neighbors what was going on, and we decided we were going to come up and talk to you, the county. Obviously, I'm learning a lot here. I know things work differently, but when I come to a county building, I just assume that we're, you know, handling it the right way, kind of showing our, our side of things and kind of what, what we needed to do to make this happen. While at the meeting, not meeting, but while at the offices, we went through, you know, different departments, got, you know, different words from different people. And everyone was very sweet, very understanding, and we showed them pictures of the risk factor and kind of how nervous it was making me. I have small children. Not only the risk of their foundation of their house, but just like the safety factor of the neighborhood and my kids running around and the mess that it was. I wish I had pictures to show you. I didn't know it was going to be like this. But anyways, about three hours later, about 3:00 PM, Vicki, who is an inspector with the county, arrives at my house, and she does not seem very happy, and she says that it is, because she normally doesn't do this, she's doing... And she says that it is, because she normally doesn't do this, she's doing us a favor. So I had assumed my conversation with Matt, um, you know, had kind of pushed things along. So she shows up and does an inspection on the wall, um, makes the guys add more rebar up to her standards. And then she says they're good to go. She leaves and I was like, so we're good to pour? And she said, yep, you guys are good to go. And I was like laughing. I was very excited. I was like, oh, thank goodness, I'm so done with this mess. Immediately, immediately called the neighbors and said, hey, we're good to go. But by that time that they had finished the work, the concrete truck was not available to come out anymore. So we had to wait till the next week, no big deal. This is that Monday, um, uh, I believe it's Kevin, I don't know. Couple Scots.
He was.
He is.
He is.
There was another Scott. There he is, my buddy. He is, he's lovely. I love him. He, he shows up and he's taking photos.
You're going to put yourself at risk if you keep making statements like that about Kevin.
Never mind. Nothing of that nasty man back there. Um, anyways, uh, there was a pump truck that was setting up to pour for the wall and the waiting on the concrete. And right as I was going to pick up my preschooler, I noticed he was there taking photos. And so of course I said, is there an issue? Is there a problem? Like, no, y'all aren't supposed to have this here. And I said, wait, but Vicki gave us approval. I was very confused. And again, I'm not trying to throw Vicki under the bus or anything like that. I just feel like honesty is, would help you guys understand the decisions that were made. And I don't want you guys to think that we went behind your back. Um, so he was taking photos and, um, I guess because there was a stop work order, we thought it was lifted because Vicki told us to go ahead. It was just very confusing. Obviously, if I could go back in time, I would have contacted every department, all of you guys, and I would have contacted you. I regret not doing that. I just assumed that the county worked together. Um, so Kevin came out and he saw the severity of the wall. There are some photos here. I don't know if you guys can see this. Should be like, anyways, the wall that's supporting in between their house and ours completely collapsed. Um, which at the time, when we initially knew that we were going to have to have the wall replaced, we were told by several people that wouldn't happen. It's, you know, retaining walls don't just fail like that. It's a risk, but it most likely won't happen. So that kind of made me a little nervous moving forward when people told me that it wouldn't happen again. It wouldn't affect their foundation, their house would not fall. I was like, well, I've been told that before, so I just think it's important for you to be proactive. That's why this whole situation is so serious. Anyways, after speaking with Kevin, I, uh, I told him, I don't want to do anything that is, you know, going to upset anybody or not what we're supposed to do. So do you think I should send this truck away? And I was told, no, that you have to do what you have to do. It's your property. You have to protect it. And like I said, I do not want to get anyone in trouble or throw anyone under the bus, anybody. But it is, it did affect my decision because I would have sent that truck away had we known that it was going to cause issues and had I known it was going to upset anybody or basically kind of be breaking the rules because that.
Please, nobody here is upset.
I know.
Don't think that.
I don't know why I'm.
Processes and.
I know. I don't want you guys to feel.
Work with me, work.
Okay, thank you.
Yeah, that's cool. Nobody's upset. We just have processes and procedures that we follow.
Okay.
Just for, because you're talking about your small children. If it's not built correctly, if it's not inspected, if Vicki hadn't said you need more rebar, what if it had fallen on, on one of your children?
One hundred percent. And I told her that. I was very thankful for that, for sure.
So they calm.
I know your eyes. Maybe I shouldn't be the one doing the talking. Um, I think that's pretty much all I have to say, um, moving forward. I'm happy to do whatever I need to do to help with the situation. If it's hire another inspector or whatever you need me to do, I will move forward with that.
So you paid a contractor take care of, you paid, paid an engineer and a contractor to take care of?
Yes.
Hopefully take care of the permits and the?
Yes.
The administrative parts of it. And your contractor told you, oh, yeah, it's taken care of. I got your permit. I'm good?
Um, yes, I'm, yes. Yeah, he, I know he came and had to sign an encroachment agreement and they, uh, yeah, they proceeded with the wall after that was signed, I believe.
Contractor told you? Are you just trusted that he knew what he was doing and was in care of all of that?
I, he told my husband he has a permit in his car. I think it was a conversation that he had with my husband saying he had a permit. But I, I guess there was also some sort of confusion with the engineering firm that submitted a three-foot wall. I don't know where that happened. I don't know how that happened. Um, but he did have a permit for that, I believe.
You don't?
Permit has not been issued. Scarborough has it still in his hand here.
Okay.
Okay.
Am I? Anything more for me?
No, you're good.
Thank you.
Go on up.
Original contractor, so.
Just state your name and address.
Kent Logan. Um, I did not have a permit. We have a, had applied for one. We contacted EMC to handle that. They were handling it. I have paperwork here from what email. They sent, uh, paperwork where they filed for the permit. They told us it was approved. That was for the three-foot wall, which we did overlook that. I caught and I have emails where I caught where they actually drew the wall half the distance. Now, I can look through the, if you want, but said something to the long and the standard that the county just wants a general idea of what's going to be done, maybe because of the time they thought it was going to be a three-foot wall. It was never intended to be a three-foot wall. That, that's not what I told EMC. That's not what the case was. Um, did apply for a permit on Thursday, the day that we got the stop work permit. I know you mentioned that it had never been removed. Stop work permit had been removed, in my opinion, because they did give us approval for the safety of their, of their house to go pour a three-foot wall. Stormwater. They issued us a land disturbance permit. They told us not to get a regular permit. So we got approval for the five-foot wall. When I talked to the customer, the customer wasn't really interested in doing the three-foot wall and coming back and raising it once all the approval was done. So that's when I went back, or, and that's, I'm sorry, that was a, after I'd already gone back to the county. Um, at that point, we were kind of at a standstill. We had formed most of the wall. The intention was to possibly pour to three-foot. And that's when all the other stuff with engineer, uh, inspectors coming out, speaking to the homeowner and getting supposed, I was not involved in additional approval, but I was told that that was what happened. That was communicated to me through text messages. Um, so our intention was not to avoid getting a permit. But once they issued the land disturbance permit without another permit, we were under the assumption we could pour, right? Because they told us we could pour. I would have paid for the permit that day, but they did not ask me to do so. They actually told me not to. When I went back to the stormwater department, they handed me the disturbance permit. I said, they actually asked me if I wanted a regular permit. Told them, no, because I thought that was town.
But you're a general contractor?
I'm not a general contractor. But to your understanding, including the owner, who was the contractor and subcontractor? Who would you name in those relationships? We were the contractor and we hired someone to do the wall. I explained to them when we did it. Did the wall. We were gonna, I'm sorry? Who did the wall? At Georgia Line of Stuck.
Name is Tony Wood. We actually did the wall. We actually had EMC since they drew up the wall. They actually came, checked the footing and they also came and inspected the wall. We actually have permits and everything, documents where they took pictures and did all that. They drew up how the wall was to be built and exactly how we did.
So Mr. Davidson, you had a permit.
Doctor, do you have?
I talked to Robert Titus several times. Mr. Scarborough's been on the phone with him. Mr. Titus been on the phone with him. He walked around his office, asking everybody in his office if anybody had been out to do a third-party inspection. He told me adamantly, no. So if it has been done, we were misinformed, but we called straight to the engineering firm and asked that question.
Uh, Ashen with EMC and they have pictures and everything. I'd be more than happy to have them.
Any more questions?
Paul, can you kind of bring us up to speed with, with maybe going out and what, what?
I'll jump on that. Mr. Scarborough was not here when all this went down.
That's right. I'm, I'm.
The Friday when I received the call from Ms. Marks and we, we had a good conversation. It was, I was trying to explain why she was, was very concerned about the, the house falling. And I understood that, which is why, uh, Patrice and I actually listened to her together. We agreed that we would present this early if, if Scott allowed it. After that conversation, I was talking to Mr. Titus, Mr. Sterling about the whole process. It was probably three o'clock Friday afternoon. And I got word that the footers had already been poured. Footers in the ground. Is that true? Yes or no? Nobody in the office. I said, please call somebody in Building Standards and send them out there and then tell me what has happened up to date. It was, it was a fact-finding mission that Vicki was, was sent on. Vicki being Vicki, while she was there, she saw work and she said, this isn't right. What her exact words, I cannot say. I wish she was here to tell us what her exact words were, but yes, Vicki did go. Vicki did call back and say, their steel was not right. They made some changes. Their steel is now right. They are.
But the foundation's in place and.
Foundation was already in place when Vicki went out.
If I, if I can interrupt for just one second. It wasn't that we didn't want to go for months and months and months to be in front of the board. That was not the problem at all. We could have waited a year. But we had a wall holding up a house above there. There were seven feet between the two of them. Something was fixing to happen. Do you, I'm sure y'all have pictures of the thing. Do you want to pull them up for them to see it?
Power.
But I mean, it's, I mean, you've got a wall that's, we didn't build a wall. We didn't take that wall down. We put a wall in front of the other wall, so we didn't encroach on the other side of the house. We were just trying to help hold up the house. Those are, that was our only mission. Honest, and I truly understand that, but when you got a mudslide and you got rain coming and it's coming down and cracking and you got all these walls, I mean, we had to make a judgment call and it wasn't all again. That was actually before any work was ever even started.
Trying to do right, right by the customer.
Address the three-foot versus five-foot. If the wall is three-foot tall, they do not have to have a, a permit from Building Standards. That's where that confusion is. Three-foot and, I think it's four-foot. Four-foot and under, not required to have a permit from Building Standards. Land disturbance permit, possibly if you meet the right criteria, how much land you're disturbing. You exceed that four-foot wall, you're required to have a wall permit as well. So they, they very well do have a, a land disturbance permit. That was issued based on the original three-foot wall that, that came in. I, I will, absolutely. Permit for the wall at five-foot has never been issued. The easement encroachment agreement, which is what this item started out as, has not been agreed to by the commission. It's been signed, it's ready to go if commission agrees to allow the encroachment into our easement. So we didn't.
We have two basic options, tear it down or give them parameters they need to do just to be in compliance.
Yes, sir. That, that's, that's correct. We need something, we need something to prove the wall is good. So that's either start over and we can watch it, make sure it's done right, or have a third-party go out and give us all the data and put their stamp on it saying it meets design criteria. That's what we don't have. We do not have any way of saying it meets design criteria.
Understood.
Partner to the ownership.
The neighbor. My name is Sean Stanley. I'm at one-one-four-one.
So you're on the uphill side.
I'm, the house is.
You were going to surf down into her yards or something.
Right, right. We love our neighbors, but not that much.
Got it.
Going back to coming out, I was there, I mean, she was there. And it said, I mean, I had to leave to go to something, but it said, yeah, several times, if this is corrected right now to your standard. Said emphatically, yes, multiple times. So it wasn't just at one time as she was home for the weekend, multiple times. Say that we could pour the wall. Um, as far as the footer part, I have no clue. House up here, how close that, my foundation? Much for the house for it to do. Trying to expedite.
Perfect.
I just. Oh. War quarter, all at that time. When Vicki got, who, who put the stop war quarter?
Stormwater put it on there.
Stormwater.
Earlier in the week.
But who would, who would remove?
Stormwater.
So they would have to come back and.
Right, so Vicki, Vicki was there for a wall only. And the wall probably met every criteria in Vicki's mind for construction. The re, she was looking at rebar spacing for a wall. Vicki didn't have a clue what was going on behind the scenes. Vicki was asked to go out there and look. And while she was there, she gave an inspection of rebar and she, I've heard several people say she said pour. I can't, I wasn't there. I don't know what she said. I just know that I told Ms. Marks the process that had to be followed. I explained that I believe staff has told some of the contractors, I'm not sure who they talked to. They'd have to get up and, and tell you who they talked to, but a lot of folks were told, do not do this until commission signs this encroachment easement. That way we can issue a permit. But one person may have said yes, and that's the one they listened to.
Forgive me. What's your name, sir? Oh, you moved over there. Don't do that. Thanks. Is there a motion in our future?
Yes, sir, it sure is. I make a motion to approve the easement encroachment agreement at eleven forty-three Sumter Landing Circle, subject to the following conditions. Survey of the wall showing the location on the parcels. Wall is on multiple parcels and easement between property owners allowing mutual asset access to the wall shall be recorded. Encroachment shall be submitted to Columbia County for consideration by commission. Third-party inspection report by a licensed engineer of the entire wall, footing and drain system, stating that it meets designed, submitted. All permits, encroachment fees, parking without a permit shall be paid. All of the conditions must be met within sixty days or the wall shall be removed by the property owner.
I, I do have one question. Mr. Driver, is it implicit that the costs for all of the love are sustained by the owner and contractors?
It should be, but you can go ahead and, I'd like to add that.
Funding by the owners.
There are second?
Second.
Is there any more debate, discussion? On paper, raise your right hand. Motion carries. Alrighty. Legal matters.
Illegal matters.
Praises the Lord. Quests reviewed by committee, none. Public comments? Have an executive session. We have two items. I think we can deal with them right now.
I make a motion to approve sixteen thousand five hundred ninety-four dollars Jones Crossing Association, Inc. Tax map number zero seven seven zero six one D for trade fixtures, Harry Road Project.
Second.
This is where we tried to save some nice brick fence columns. Um, were unable to save them, so we're having to go back now and, and pay the Jones Creek for their nice brick columns.
Lot of columns, like a mile's worth of columns.
But most of those have already been paid for.